From. Meetings and I think. Molly, you probably won't need to vote on this, but um. And Paul, were you here on that?
No.
Okay, then we can really move that agenda.
That's when you were intentionally leaving me on the invites.
What? Um, didn't we have one since June?
We're supposed to have one in August. But I don't remember when.
Okay. So my goal for this ordinance committee, um. Hopefully, within the next few years, we can. Look at ordinances that need to be obviously updated or revised, but. If there is any way that we could possibly look at ordinances that don't have. Any value in terms of.
No, I agree.
Good. So I think part of that discussion for the members of the ordinance committee, would you? Agree, I'm gonna do a motion to that effect, but. Um, that that could be our agenda for the. Look at Molly. Paul.
The the motion is to.
No motion, I don't know, it's more of a. Would you agree if that would?
Yeah, yeah, you mean a review to to update and and.
Good.
Eliminate unnecessary ordinances, yeah.
Chief, I know Sergeant Baldus has been. Very active on this committee, he liked the idea when I talked about it last year, um.
You've been talking about it and there are definitely some. We haven't, we don't have anything prepared for this.
Right.
But our goal is to go through the ordinances that that affect the police department. And determine whether or not anything should be changed. For any ordinance, the committee worked very well with us last time and we got some new ordinances of the city. That have been effective for us, uh, it's a perfect example is the parking with the tractor trailers. We haven't had any more issues ever since that was. That.
Good.
The other thing that about. Or yet or.
No.
The other thing we talked about is that we looked at the fines, the fine structure for these ordinances. And we're really kind of, our fine system is pretty antiquated compared to our surrounding community, our house. So I think we'd like to come up with proposal to the committee to discuss increasing some fines from what they currently are. Uh, just not 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 absorb.
Right.
But to bring them up kind of in par, you know, on par with with some other cities and organizations. So the, you know, the fine structure, for example, our lowest fines like fifteen dollars. You know, we raised each fifteen to twenty-five dollars for once. Um, incident, if we raised it to, you know, at ten dollars on both of us from fifteen to twenty-five and twenty-five to thirty-five. Or higher, the council or the committee so chooses, but we think that the fines are in our kind of.
For what, what specifically?
So for example, if somebody's parking, you know, if somebody parks downtown. And doesn't, you know, doesn't pay to be there, you know, the ticket, the the fine is fifty dollars, so you know, so you give them that ticket for fifty bucks. They get to park for the entire day downtown, fifty dollars, to me it's a deal, you know, versus the, you know. Um, so those are the types of things that we're talking about is to kind of make it worth.
Yeah.
It may put some.
Yep.
The other thing, I briefly touched base with. Judge Magistrally. I, and I, and I'm looking into this now is that allowing, I spoken, spoken to the mayor and I spoken to some of the, um. Some of the ways that we can enforce some of these these ordinances, one would be to, um. Give our constable, our elected constables the authority. To go out and issue city, city tickets. It it it's gonna take, with us being as shorthanded as we are, it'll take a lot of the burden off the police department to have to deal with. Uh, you know, some of these, for example, the 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 bulk waste, people are putting bulk waste on the front of your, which is again a violation of the ordinance. They're calling the police department to go deal with somebody who's not bringing their garbage can. So if we were to be able to, you know, to provide this information to our cost, to our elected constables. Uh, let them go out and issue these 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 tickets, uh, getting them. We're, we're, we're looking at some, some ways to maybe potentially, uh, bring some enforcement to. The ordinances that are offered. I've been in touch and I've talked to the judge briefly, I. I've been in touch with Danbury, Danbury has a system where they have some of their, their civilians and elected officials. Enforcing some of the Danbury codes and ordinance codes. So I, I, I need to get more information on that, but this is just something that I want, that I want to kind of do to kind of help alleviate some of them and. And 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 don't be offended by what I say, this is a nonsense clause, we're, we're busier with with so, with many other things that did. Somebody's garbage pail who was put away. Uh, you, you, we can have a, have something to, that, some to have a con, our elected officials or. Currently, I, I currently have empowered, um, uh, our parking authority, Ashlyn, to, uh, to. Sidewalk enforcement for winter weather, so she's been going. For. Side blocks as. Prior by a little bit, it's been affected then. And getting people. So, so we're just coming up with brainstorm and come up with some ideas. Move, move this along or. Parking.
Remind me, and I know for constables, they typically are able to. Addiction notices and other things, so you want to expand that?
They, they serve. That we, I think myself, the judge. You're sure that. But there, there are city officials who do issue, of course, I think our zoning issues force that some enforcement. Fine, our light officer has the ability to issue lines. Uh, so I think it's just a matter of us as a council, as, as the ordinance committee council, giving the authority to. There's certain people to do this, I, I don't think that there should be. Of course, I'm working, the police department never. Situation. But I think, again, what we're talking specifically, city. State, that state.
Yes. I think. Um, well, no, no, I, I agree completely that this is a good, this is a good direction going. Uh, my concerns would be. You know, um, authorizing. There's gotta be a level of of appeal, right? So you've got a constant writing around saying this person says, oh, but I made some phone calls and blah, 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 blah. I don't know what that is, I mean, there's a lot of questions, but I, I like the direction this is going. I'm wondering if maybe, just in general, I'm thinking about this. As we proceed down this road, and I agree with you, I think, I think this is really a smart process. That, um. Maybe the goal is, is to empower constables to serve notice to people. Infractions, you know, something in writing that would be approved and and our legal would would approve this. Saying that if this is not resolved by such and such a date, you know. That the Torrington, if somebody will.
Issue.
Will issue a ticket, something like that, so you give them some time doing, and then the actual ticketing is then handled by your guys who would then. So maybe make it more efficient in that way, so they don't have the whole long conversation, they just notice them that. This is going to happen if you don't do this.
City currently does issue.
Then.
No, I was gonna say the city does currently issue notices.
Right.
So, um, what they do then is then they go. My thought is to take that away from us so that we. Better serve doing, uh, certain addition, more important cause for service than dealing with somebody's. All ways, we would notify the constabulary of an that hit was a violation, um, game street. They would go and issue a similar thing. And that there is an appeal process, I. Appeal process isn't. Your minds that are issued.
Okay.
I, it's my understanding, I, I don't, I.
There are no instances right now, chief. That, there are instances right now where constables have the authority to issue a final, a ticket or something.
I, I researched, I, I spoke.
Is that what you said?
I spoke to. Not specific, I, I, my, I was just brainstorming, I, I just thought that our constables. They get elected, they're, they're elected officials, you know, what do they, certain people. Let's, let's put them to the work, they're willing to help us and to. Issue some, you know, issue some form of enforcement to enforce our city ordinances, I. Yeah, this. Just, just.
Well, I think, no, no, I think it's a good, and I think it's something we should put in place, certainly. Not, not retroactively empowering these people. Because I'm thinking as a member of the Torrington Democratic Council Committee, we have to put people up. A lot of times, a constable is one of those positions where. You know.
Someone can make fun of that money, you know.
I, I know that, what I'm saying is, but the role is, the role is not that, and so you, it attracts people for different reasons other than that, that is a whole different. There's a whole different sort of. Mental space to be in and and and.
Be optional too, not required. Right. I think most of them. Work harder than others. Yep. So, so I, yes, I mean, I think it's.
You were a constable, weren't you?
No, I guess.
No, but you want to think of the personality of the person that now you are empowering as a constable to do this, has got to be. A very fair-minded person, not somebody who's prone to having problems with their neighbors.
Right, no, yeah, yeah.
There's definitely gotta be a balance, so I, you know, I think there's a lot more to it than, you know, saying, hey, that we're getting. Definitely, uh. More research.
Okay. I like the idea of going in, yes.
So maybe when you and Sergeant Baldus get together and talk about it, we can, you know, maybe put it on the next agenda, probably need a little more. Seven months later. Um, we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, any of the situation. For mending. But I guess we first need to find out whether it's. That our castles would be allowed to do that or what.
And that, I'll have to research that, but yeah, so the chief mentioned to me his thought and I'm happy to work with him. And even come up with a proposal, but yeah, I think we would have to research the statutes that, you know. Control what constables can and can't do. And, um, and I think the way, probably the way we should proceed is I'll work with. Um, with the chief and. Officer Baldus or whoever in in his department. And come up with a proposal, come up with an ordinance to present to you that then you'll have something concrete to review. And we'll go from there, and I agree with Councilman Kevin Arrow that it may, it may change. The respective town committees as far as who would they put on the ballot for those positions.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, it may be a doable thing.
I mean, if we do our research, the statute may not allow it. But I think it's something.
Yeah. Yeah, and that shouldn't be a real hard. Question to research to find out, I mean, there, there's statutes, I'm sure. That talk about what authority constables have there are.
Right.
Maybe we could filter it down to, to the selectmen.
Possibility to. Something to do with that.
They don't do anything, right?
No, that's, that's.
Then that might be a charter revision.
What do you think?
Yeah, I like overall, I like overall the feeling of somehow. You know, um. Putting this low level of infraction. Make you get more almost like community-based.
Right.
Um. Um, enforcement, you know, um. I, I think it's, I think in time it sends a message, that's all, I, I think, I think it kind of sends a message. Across the city in time, not immediate, but in time, it's like, you know, everybody's kind of. Agreed to play by the rules here and and, you know, and when you're not, we, your neighbors are gonna call you out on it. And I think that's probably a positive, good long-term effect of it.
Hi, so we will have further discussion when we get, look at, and whether we're able to do it. So, you know, just because Molly and Mike are new to this, we don't, um. We don't make things up, typically, things are put on their agenda based on. You know, revisions that need to be made, the statute has changed, um. Legislature has needed some changes or. Police, fire. Public Works, that's why we're. Oh, he's online, oh. Alright, so I think we're gonna go into really our second agenda, I think we jumped ahead here a little bit, but that's okay. Um, there was some recommendations for us to look at some deletions. One was. Six. Having to do with bids and contracts, um. And I think it's talking about the definitions of bids and contracts. Have a chance to look at it at night.
Um, I haven't, I just got it. Just now. Yep, so I haven't looked at any, I haven't looked at any of this.
Okay.
But if you want, if you want to charge me with researching something, I'm happy to. To do that.
Yes, I guess this one was put into place in two thousand seven. Um, and it may be that we do bids and contracts differently now, um. I don't know, is Ray on the line, can he speak to this?
Yes, good evening.
Hi.
Hi, um. Part of the, the clause in this chapter is the six percent preference to, um. Local vendors. What we're finding is that. When we, we do this bid, this ends up being detrimental. Um, and we. And we're not getting a considerable. Number of respondents to bids. Now, this was put in in two thousand seven to give local, um. Companies a preference. One of the things we do find is that the language is. Not allowable if we are using state or federal money. Um, and, and that's so what, that's what we're experiencing. So it was, it was to take a look at this and see. If it should be rescinded, and that is the six percent preference, if a. Local bidder is within six percent, we've had several instances where the. Local bidder was within six percent. Agreed to honor the low bid and then, um, backed out of that. Because he found out he couldn't do it for that cost. Um, I'm only speaking from a public works perspective. So this was a recommendation to take a deeper look into this. To see if, um, this might be something we want to reconsider.
Hmm. Any comments from members of the ordinance? So yours. Can you hear me? Ray, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I think this was to incentivize those local. Torrington businesses to actually submit bids, so they would, if they were. Less than ten thousand, is that my understanding, if the quotes came in less than ten thousand of. The bids that were acquired for whatever the project might be. They would have. More consideration than. And contractors outside of the Torrington area.
So the way it's structured is that if a local bidder is in within six percent. Of the low bid. And then he is then asked if he. Because he's, he's a local, he has a physical address within Torrington. He is offered. The opportunity to match the low bid. If he is within six percent. Of the low bid, no matter what the bid is, it could be a two hundred thousand dollar bid, it could be whatever, um. So, and what we're finding, it's like, we go out for vehicles. Quite often, and you know what happens, we get very few. Local dealerships bidding for vehicles. Additionally. We have not seen a significant number of. Local bidders bidding on bigger contracts where this comes into play. So we're, we believe that this may be. Detrimental in that. It's hindering. Organ, uh. Firms from really outside of the city that may bid it, but then see this clause. And say, well, oh, there's this so-and-so is in Torrington, so they're not gonna bid.
I know, but if you're saying that you haven't gotten a lot of bids from. People within the Torrington area, then why, you know. Sort of. Like the preference, you know, to those that might bid from Torrington, but if your history of. People not bidding from Torrington, it really is a. Why would it matter that the ordinance stays the same?
Yeah, it, it was just a recommendation to take a deeper dive into this ordinance and see what the actual. Benefit versus the cost. It by not getting additional bidders from outside the community.
I guess maybe I would like to have some data of how many businesses. In Torrington benefited from this ordinance.
So this is the way it works now, right? Now, you put a bid in, if you're, if you're within six percent locally, you can resubmit a second bid. That matches the lowest, right, in short rate, that's the idea, correct?
In short, yes, that is the idea, yes.
But I, I think the committee, at least I would like more, more information on whether or not.
Exactly, I like to see examples, yeah, I mean, this seems to, I mean, we want to give preferential. I don't see how this, what you're proposing, right, how does that increase the, the, the opportunity for local people to win contracts? I guess I'm missing that.
I think it does, if I could just chime in, I think that, Ray, you're, you're. Suggesting that that. City-based bidder preference be eliminated.
Right.
Right?
So you're making.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't give any preference to, the preference would be gone.
I know. I'm not sure this is the one I was gonna pick out of my hat, the first one to look at to be eliminated, um. So I, I think. At this point, I would like to recommend that we get a little more data to see how many.
Sure. Examples of where this has, where this has been detrimental to Torrington, you mentioned detrimental, I like to see some specific examples of where this has been detrimental. To the management of our, of our city and its finances. And you can make the point that.
Absolutely, we, we can take a deeper dive into that and see if we, I'll talk to the purchase agent. And, and look at some past. History to see, you know. What the, the impact has been.
Okay.
And unless, unless I'm wrong, the last, when I was on chairman of the Board of Education, I don't know if it's changed since then, but they, the bottom line is. When it goes out to bid, lowest bidder, lowest bidder is what's recommended, but if you can, if, if. Right, if the allocating entity. You know, um. Can make a case that the lowest bidder. Is not, has, there are issues with the lowest bidder. Based on, based on past performance, records of past, well, you don't have to go with, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
If, if you can say, well, not all things are equal here, this person does not have the track record that this person who's, you know. Uh, eight percent more expensive has. The city allows that. Agency to go with the higher bid, correct, that's still in place?
Yes, I mean, that's presented if there's something that. And, you know, a city department can justify not going to the lower, lowest bidder. You know, uh, previous issues with that particular contractor. Or for whatever reason, I mean, we come to you, we have to justify not using the low bidder. So yes, that, that still plays.
Okay, okay, okay.
Alright, I, I'd like to actually. Not make a decision on this one.
No, I, I agree.
No, and, and I think from this, my perspective. What, what, you know, I sent out was not necessarily to make a decision on at tonight's meeting, it was. Areas that maybe we need to take a, a deeper look at. And to see what the impact are these ordinances needed. Do they, are they relevant now, sometimes, you know, forty-plus years later?
Got it.
And I, I appreciate it. So we're gonna go on to the next one, um, chapter nine.
Well, ju- just, just to button this up, we are asking Ray to come back with some examples, correct?
Okay, if, I mean, if in fact the. Committee would like to even consider this.
No, if, if you're asking for this, um. You know, I have confidence in you. You know, um, as a department head, I, I'm sure there's reasons why you're asking for this, I would just like to see some examples. Um. Before taking any action, okay, Ray?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'm moving along because now we only have fifteen minutes and I'm the one that was late, so, chapter nine, um. You had, um, looked at this, this is nineteen seventy-four. And civil preparedness agency. So.
Yeah, I was just looking, you know, because when you asked that question.
Yeah.
So, some time ago last year is, you know, are there ordinances that ge- generally might seem obsolete? Based upon the evolution of, you know, city policies, procedures, regulations, rules. Um. I just looked at this one and said, you know, is this kind of really covered under the emergency management department?
Yes.
Civil preparedness, civil defenses. I don't board this, so I'll pause on emergency. After all the, all the, the, where this is just.
Good. Good.
So I would recommend that we, um, look at eliminating this as long as it is, and I'll ask Mike to take a deeper dive and. Whether or not all of what is in this section is under the emergency management department. And.
Is, is that the case, chief?
For the most part, it is.
All the duties.
Civil preparedness, civil defense, it all comes on. Public emergency policy. So, we're, we're in a, that is, which is the state. Or conjunction today, so it is all.
Okay.
So is there an ordinance that established an emergency management department?
I think this is your ordinance here, it's an old ordinance.
So you're saying this may be just a simple matter of find and replace.
Correct.
Find civil preparedness agency and change it to emergency management, whatever.
As long as it's not reflected in any other area of ordinance.
And as long as the, all the stuff in here, the substantive stuff is the same.
Right.
You'd have to check that out. Okay.
Alright, great.
We need a motion to, to direct this, right?
Um, at this point, I think we're gonna have Mike just, you know, get more information and we can, if it is something that we can easily change, we'll bring it, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, similar to. Um. The constable suggestion, I think that, you know, the chief and I need to come up with a proposed. Amendment to the ordinance and present it to you, and then you vote on that, whether to do it or not.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. So we're gonna jump to chapter twenty-six, this is the flood and erosion control board, another one that was established in nineteen sixty-one. And, you know, I think, thank you, Ray, for asking the question, do we even have this, is this part of the emergency operations plan?
Who is it?
So is it, I guess the question is, should it be under planning and zoning versus? Do they deal with flood and. Erosion control?
They have regular meetings.
My, my point is, does it have to be here, should it be under planning and zoning as one of their functions? Jeremy? Another, so you got, that's a homework.
Who's on that, do you have a list? Heather, who's on the, the, um, the flood and erosion?
But they're all part of the planning and zone.
Some are. Not all, Diane Carroll's not, I don't believe. I don't think, maybe I'm wrong.
I think she's got a current list, though, is that a current list? So either way.
Okay.
Think all we need to do with this one is to find out whether it's under the oversight of planning and zoning. And should it be here? As a separate ordinance.
Yeah, it seems redundant right now.
That makes sense?
Yeah. So who's gonna pursue that, who's gonna?
Mike's gonna look farther into whether or not it would go.
I'll talk to the land use folks.
Perfect. Alright, we, great, chapter thirty, um, Human Relations Commission, nineteen sixty-eight. You know, maybe next time we'll have our meetings. You know, maybe next time we'll have our meetings separate from here so we can face each other. That good? Human Relations Commission nineteen sixty, do we have this? That was another question. Thank you, Ray. Okay. So I wonder if the human rights, uh, you know, the state commission on human rights and
Human Relations. Human Rights and Opportunities.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if when that was established, it took the place of the city ordinance.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Heather, is there a record of, do we have, this is not, this is not existing? Okay.
Yeah, this is good.
Yeah, no, no, well, that's good.
No, because I I don't know when CHRO was was, that's a state commission that really deals with any any complaints of discrimination, so. Part two, chapter ninety, so all of those on the next page, I'll deal with chapter thirty, so if we can go to um, this is having to do with, um, buildings moving, again, another one established in nineteen sixty-one, that was eleven years. This be covered, um, under building department rules and regs. This is probably another one that we really need to get.
Kevin Gillette.
Yeah, Kevin or, um.
Kevin.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
He's the building guy, right?
Ray, did you bring it up because it was addressed with Kevin or?
No, I brought it up because, I mean, they issued the building department, issues permits associated with moving buildings or demolishing buildings as part of their standard policy rules and regulations. Now, is that, do they have rules and regulations that cover this and does it really need to be an ordinance? I think some of these stem back, you could see it's from nineteen sixty-one, probably was put in effect as a result of the flood of fifty-five and you know, a lot of things roaming, I'm not even sure when the last time a building was physically moved. You know, I mean, demolishing is one thing, but, um, you know, is it relevant? And then is it covered? You know, a lot of statutes are written so that, you know, the department shall affect rules, regulations and policies to accomplish this. Does it need to be an ordinance?
Thank you. I, that's, that's why we're here, is to ask these questions and, uh, hopefully not have things that either duplicate or in terms of function or activities of a particular department or that may be eliminated from our ordinances. So I think we need to look into this a little bit further with whether or not we need it. And whether it's your department, Ray, or if you need, you know, our, our corporate counsel to look into it further.
No idea.
It might be one that we could actually recommend for elimination.
Right, and I, I would just suggest that that that's not gonna be one that I have to research, that you need to talk to Kevin Gillette and find out whether he, what authority he has under the current building code. Because the other thing this says is a permit from the city council, not a permit from the building department.
And we don't really issue a city.
Well, you you would probably not want to be in the business of doing.
No, no.
Nor have we been probably since nineteen sixty-one.
No. Whoever said, it sounds like it was a Yeah, it sounds right, so this whole thing seems screwy. But the mention of fact, if you're building, right, if you're moving a building and you're you're moving it on a state, right, you're going on two, if you're moving on two oh two, it wouldn't be the city would would not be.
You have to deal with the state.
You have to deal with the state.
And all the utilities.
Yeah, it's a much more complex issue, so.
So I will, I will, um, volunteer to talk to Kevin Gillette.
Thank you.
See what he says about this. And then yeah, even, I think even if he would say, oh, no, you should keep that in there, I would say, well, maybe we should tell them to get a permit from the building department instead of the city council.
But do do we have laws, Chief? Do you know that we have laws that define how big a, how big a vehicle could travel on our streets?
Larger vehicles need permits, state permits.
Oh, those exist, so those exist already?
Yeah, they do. Oversized view, any of our roles.
Okay, so, so there's already, right, so there's already rules and regs in place.
That's stuff. And I'm just, I'm just curious now about what happened when they move skis down. That's a building.
Yeah.
Somebody, but anyway.
Okay, I thought I thought that levitated itself, maybe not.
I'll talk to Kevin Gillette.
Thank you.
Can I say that out loud?
All right, chapter eighty-eight, if we could, we're gonna, we're still in the ordinance committee meeting, so we've got a few more minutes to get through chapter eighty-eight, which is buildings demolishing, this was established in nineteen eighty-one. And again, you know, it's questionable in turn, in terms of whether or not we need it in the ordinances.
I think that
Thank you, Mike.
This would be one that if you were thinking about eliminating this, you probably should talk to Torrington Historical Commission, Mark McCarron and those folks. Because they would probably, although if you, if you propose that and it goes to a public hearing, right, would that, would this all have to go to a public hearing? I'm not even sure.
If we are making a suggestion for elimination, everything would have to go to a public.
Hearing.
Yeah.
You'll, I think you'll hear from them.
Actually, I think if we could just send, um, and you don't mind sending this to Mark, just in advance, it's always better to get input from the people who care, um, about our historical buildings.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna go to, we've got a couple of minutes to go to one, um, chapter one fifty-two. This is parking lots established, this was established in nineteen sixty-one. And it was managed by the facilities director, employee parking during working hours. How is this not where we are right now, Ray?
Yeah, I think the only thing that you're looking at is that ordinance is the chief of police, self-p patrol and manage the parking of vehicles at the rear of city hall. Chief of police shall designate and permit vehicles be parked and space reserved for parking of vehicles, the city-owned automobiles, our town staff. The department does issue parking stickers. They have recently instituted parking stickers for the rear of city hall because of unauthorized parking.
Just to revise?
It might be to kind of, you know, pare it down.
Well, Ray, could you, you know, recommend some changes, um, or propose some changes for the next meeting that will air this down?
Yes, I could do that.
To, you know, a more
Well, maybe, maybe that also is gonna be a, a find and replace as well. Take out the chief of police and put in the facilities manager. That's Jamie's in that position now, right? Or the director of public works, you'd wanna, would you suggest the director of public works be substituted there?
Yes, I mean, the facilities director manages all of the city buildings and sites. So, I mean, with the advice and consent of the public works director, but, I mean, he really has given the responsibility of the custody and care of the buildings and the sites. So like, one fifty-two five says no person other than those permitted by the chief of police shall park any vehicle in reserve parking spaces or an area, which is confusing because the city hall the back lots where employees park during the day are only restricted during work hours.
So I'm, you know, because of time, the council meetings, um, we're gonna need to adjourn, uh, but I'd like to um, recommend that we have a follow-up meeting of the ordinance committee on March fourth, which is a month from now, is that enough time for?
It's my wife's birthday. That's fine, for me, I
Tell her to come, we'll, for your occasion. Are we good with that? Is that enough time, I guess maybe to do what we need to do with the ordinance or get
Yeah, if it's not, I'll tell you that night.
Okay. All right, we're gonna schedule the next meeting for March fourth at five thirty.
And I, there would also be other things, I think, to add to the agenda. Um, I know that, um, Nate from planning and zoning was looking to have some changes made to the inland wetlands regulations. The fair rent commission ordinance needs some substantial change, I think it was kind of implemented in June because there was a state statute that said you gotta do it.
We were a part of that.
It really needs a lot of reworking. Um, and then the blight, the land use office also wants to make some changes to the blight ordinance. So I've been working on those things and would, um, probably pass them on to, who's your secretary?
It would be Heather, would, Heather, actually.
And so just send them to Heather and say, please add these to the agenda too, and and I think, yeah, the way we would handle it is send you proposed ordinances, proposed revisions that you could review and talk about that night. So, I think the fair rent commission in particular, you really need some.
We, with intent, made it general enough so that, um, you know, just just meet the statutory language that we were required to meet. Knowing that once the commission was formed, it would be, yes, yeah, and whether or not it be in ordinance or in the committee itself, I don't know, there was discussion whether or not the ordinance actually needed to change, but if your review of it, things like that.
Yeah.
Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
All in favor? All right, thank you so much. See you in a month.
Shut up.
That's the only date.
Okay. It is, uh, six thirty-seven PM, so I want to call this, uh, we have a a lineup of meetings that we're trying to accomplish this evening, so uh, the meeting that I am calling to order right now is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund. For the record, today is Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty-four, uh, it is till six thirty-seven PM. We have, um, members of the council uh, participating in person this evening, I have for the record, Councilman Iven, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Cavanero, Councilman Oliver, uh, and representing the Board of Trustees, I have uh, Board of Safety members, um, Tyler Young, Joe McElroy, Darlene Battle, do we have anybody on? Anybody participating online? Uh, from the Board of Safety?
Oh, so we have Officer, uh, not from the Board of Safety, but we have, uh, representing Torrington Police Department, Nick Littary, representing the, um, Fire Department, we have, um, Tom Sterling and Thank you, Ed. Um, so a quorum of both boards, right? We, good, all right, we are, we have a quorum of both boards. So before we begin the meeting, could we stand a place of flag? All right, we'll jump into item number one. I will entertain a motion by the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fire Men's Pension Fund to approve the minutes of the regular joint meeting, which was held on September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Somewhat.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Spino, secondly, Councilwoman Ruette, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving into item two, uh, this is a presentation that doesn't require a, uh, motion. Um, but I would like to turn this over to Christopher Ketchmere of Fiducient Advisors, um, to go over the um, current status of the accounts.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, good evening, everyone, good to see folks, got a a big crowd tonight, I guess everyone's not here to see a pension review, so we'll be we'll be tidy with our time once it comes up on the screen here. Catch you, I think just motivations are twofold, we want to obviously catch you up quickly on, um, performance, both of the plans. A little bit of color on what went on in the markets as we came into the end of the year. And then we do have a a pair of recommendations for the members to consider, uh, both in the form of the larger allocations of the programs, right, how much we have in invested in each of the different asset classes, and then moreover, a contemplating a change to one of the managers in the program. We'll, we'll backfill what we talked about at our fall meeting and get you caught up on that consideration and go from there, but I think we can do this in, um, in pretty quick order. So I am going to jump ahead here to, uh, page five. It's a busy page, there's a lot going on, we're not gonna go through each and every detail, what I would remind the the members of, when Tony sat with you here a year ago, you'll remember a couple of things. Uh, there was a lot of concern at the time about what the Federal Reserve was doing with interest rates. Remember, they've been raising interest rates, they were doing that to try to get inflation under control. Right? And the concern from investors a year ago was, uh-oh, are they gonna tighten the economy and the financial condition so much that we might have a recession? We did not have a recession, never had a recession in all of twenty twenty-three, the markets continued to churn along, the economy continued to perform reasonably well. Um, and now the Federal Reserve, as we sit here today, has inflation under control and moreover, has interest rates at a level that if they do see things slow down a little bit, they've got the luxury right of reducing those interest rates a little bit to soften the blow. So as we came into the end of the year, calendar year twenty twenty-three, November and December, uh, the takeaway from investors was, you know, we think we're in pretty good shape here and that has the makings not only of some good returns near term, but some potentially good returns longer term as well. Um, so we, that's really kind of the primary takeaway that I'd hope the committee would, uh, would appreciate this evening. You see here a lot of numbers on the page, but really the takeaway, hopefully on the top half of the page, starting in the left-hand corner, with the fixed income markets, really good returns across the investing spectrum in twenty twenty-three. And you see that pretty explicitly in the way of some of the numbers here. Uh, the broad fixed income markets that your managers focus on in both the town and the police and fire plans, uh, up about, uh, five and a half percent for the year, and then you see the equity markets in the middle of the page led by the US, the big US companies predominantly up almost twenty-seven percent. But look across the page there in the exhibit and you see the uh, smaller companies here in the United States up almost seventeen percent, and international markets up anywheres between ten and eighteen percent. So really the makings of a really good year, and remember, that's on the heels of a, an awful twenty twenty-two. Remember when we sat here a year ago and you looked at the numbers, we had both equity and fixed income markets down dramatically. And we had a pretty strong turnaround, uh, in the calendar year last year that ended in December. So I'm gonna jump right in here, um, just to give you a quick updates on the two plans, we'll start with, uh, the city plan. Uh, so here's the allocation of assets at the end of the calendar year, you see about forty-five and a half million dollars. Uh, you see the allocations there, what I mean, if you, the middle two columns, right, the actual allocation versus the target weights, pretty close is intended, right, and designed. We work with, uh, Dan and the team on cash flows and keeping those aligned throughout the year, so we're in pretty good shape from an allocation standpoint. And I had to draw your attention to, just pocket it for the time being, because we'll come back to it. Metropolitan West Total Return Fund, one of your fixed income managers, you see him in the upper left-hand corner of the exhibit. In the town plan, you can see the city plan, they run about five point seven million dollars. Remember, we elevated them to watch at the last meeting. And if you remember, we talked a little bit about concerns around some changes to the team there that administers that money on the city's behalf. Uh, and a, a, a measure of uncertainty there. So we want to talk this evening quickly. Uh, about, uh, potentially making a change there. Larger allocations, the rest of the roster of managers you see on your exhibit there in pretty good working order. Upper left-hand corner of the page here, you'll see that the, the plan was up about ten percent in the fourth quarter alone. See the number in the very upper left-hand corner, the dark blue bars are the experience of the portfolio. The lighter blue bars, you'll remember, are the experience of the broad markets. So a good quarter, uh, for the plan, uh, and a, a pretty good calendar year as well, right? You see the plan generated a, a return in excess of fifteen percent. Um, that equated in the upper right-hand corner to a little over six million dollars of investment gains last year. Um, so a nice, uh, absolute return year for the plan. And, and in pretty good shape. Uh, let's do the same thing quickly for police and fire. And we'll look at the same metrics. So you see here, the plan, remember, these two plans share, share allocation. They invest the same way they invest with the city managers, just as a reminder. And that's by design. Uh, but seventy-six point eight million dollars of invested assets for police and fire at the end of the calendar year. And similar to what we just talked about with the city plan, you see there across the schematic here. The allocations at the end of year versus those target weights are, are in good working order. Um, we have the Met West issue again, that just, uh, table that for a minute, we'll come back to it. And then quickly for, uh, a police and fire, right, the numbers should be very similar, right? Because we've got the same allocations. Upper left-hand corner of the page, uh, again, the ten percent, uh, return for the quarter thereabouts. And the little north, a fifteen percent return for the calendar year ending in December. And you see there, you began the year with the, the police fire plan at about seventy-one million dollars. Um, net outflows, four and a half, call it, and then about a ten and a half million dollar investment gain. So they ended the year at. At seventy-six point, um, nine million dollars. That is a real quick update. I understand that. I didn't want to kind of cut to the chase with a couple of our recommendations. Let me pause there and see if we missed anything either in the quick update. Or just to catch up on the two plans. Anything from members or?
Questions?
On the fund recommendations?
Yes, sir.
What are the expense ratios of the change?
Sure, sure. Well, well, uh, we're going to come to that momentarily. I'm going to work you through it if that's okay. But, um, they're very similar, not identical, but very similar. So it won't affect, affect, excuse me, the overall pen, uh, expenses of the plans. But good question. I'll show you that in a minute. Folks, okay? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, this quarter, remember, we use this governance calendar. And that's where we step away from what's going on in markets and the portfolios every quarter, because there's fiduciaries, right, right? We want to make sure we're kind of attending to other things. This is the quarter where we step back. And we work with our teams, research teams internally, and we try to gauge over the long haul what different segments of the markets are going to do from a return and a risk standpoint. We want to test the mix of your portfolio. Two portfolios and make sure that we're still on target, uh, to meet the return objectives that you have. Remember, actuarially, I think we're at six and three quarters percent, right? So we want to make sure that we've got a program over time that can fulfill that objective. So this is the allocation, uh, discussion. And I'm, I, I'm going to, with apologies, jump you to a page here because there's an awful lot going on on this page. And I'm not going to bring you through each and every number, but what I'll just, uh, maybe highlight for the group. Year over year. We sit here and we try to gauge what we think the long-term returns for the different areas of the markets that you're investing in will deliver. So you see there in this exhibit here, twenty twenty-three numbers to the right, the twenty twenty-four numbers immediately to the left there. Across the fixed income, the equity markets, uh, and, and some of the other real asset and alternative markets. The biggest takeaway on this page, and it's got implications for our recommendation. Is look at our expectations for fixed income in the upper right-hand corner of the exhibit. Remember, we talked earlier about the Fed driving interest rates higher and market rates have moved higher. On a go-forward basis, from our standpoint, that means we've got better. Expectations for the fixed income market. So you see those return expectations are higher as a result. And that has some implications for the recommendation and how we've got the assets positioned. The other major segments of the market, equities, you see there in the middle of the page. Um, still holding pretty close to where they were last year, down just a touch on the heels of the real strong twenty twenty-three. In terms of our expectations. So that's the landscape. I know that's quick. It's going to kind of, hopefully, I think it'll. Uh, resonate with folks here as we kind of go through this detail. Um, and this is a god-awful page, I admit. There's a million numbers on this page. You, I can't expect or nor would you want to know everything that's going on on the page, but what I would say to the members. What we've done here, you see the, the blue highlight there, you can't make out the numbers, but. It equates to the mixes, the allocation mixes in the two plans today. Today, those two plans, remember, have about sixty-five percent of your assets in each plan in global equities. Thirty percent in fixed income or bonds. And about a five percent position in each program and diversified real assets. When you look under the hood, we can get more granular than that. We put that into our system with the assumptions we just talked about. Right? And you see there in the upper right-hand corner of the exhibit, what the expectations of the program are. On a twenty and ten-year basis, respectively, your current mixes modeled to. An eight point two and a seven point eight percent return per annum, respectively. Everyone see those numbers on the exhibit if you can make it out? And it has a volatility of about, of about thirteen percent. What we tested. And the core, the basis for the recommendation this evening is that we think, given those higher interest rates. We can build a slightly more conservative mix of assets and not really inhibit the return profile of the program. So what I would turn your attention to there, where it, uh, remember, um, thirty percent fixed income today. Look at that mix too. Right? Looks an awful lot like, not identical, but an awful lot like what we've got today, but it's got a bit more fixed income in it. And you can see there, when you work your way over to the return expectation columns, really no change. In terms of what the return potential of the program is, but we do have introduced slightly less volatility into the program. So in our mind, right, that's an opportune time to come forth to the committee and, and, and to the other members and say. We've got an opportunity, we think, to de-risk a little bit. Keep the program on track in terms of a return expectation standpoint. Uh, and not, uh, 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 you know, going to continue to meet the objectives that we set forth for the plan. More pragmatically, this is probably the easiest thing for, hopefully for the, the, the committee to appreciate. You see what we've done here, uh, current versus proposed. So same managers with one exception, we'll talk about in a minute. You see what we do there, we take a little bit out of the equity and the real asset portions of the portfolios. We put that into fixed income to those attractive return opportunities. Um, and again, we do so in a manner that doesn't really, um, uh, prevent the plan from continuing on a, on a pro rata basis or a pro forma basis. Rather than to earn out the return that we need. Um, so that's the proposal in terms of the allocation change, kind of a two-part consideration here for the members. Um, Met West, remember, we talked about concerns there, time to make a change. Talking to our research team, they agree with that. It's time to re, uh. Uh, uh, repurpose that capital with another, what we think is very capable fixed income manager. That's Dodge and Cox income that you see introduced on the schedule here. Um, Met West goes away, Dodge and Cox comes on to the, to the, the question of fees. Um, Met West, I think the share class we're in today is thirty-seven basis points. That's about three tenths of one percent, right? If you remember the math. Dodge and Cox, I think is at forty-one basis points. So it's ever slightly more expensive. Much more consistent returns and, and we think a, a switch that makes, you know, perfect sense. Four basis points on the position size that we're talking about, right, has de minimis effects on the overall expenses borne by the two plants. It's, you know, less than one, one basis point or one, one hundred, one percent. So it's really, it's really immaterial. Thank you. So that was long-winded, I know, a lot going on there, but for the, for the members' consideration. A slight change to the allocation. From sixty, from seventy thirty to sixty-five thirty-five. And then Met West out of the roster in favor of Dodge and Cox income with the positions you see there on, on page fourteen. Let me pause there for a minute because there's a lot going on and see what questions folks might have.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious about what the fun or what the plan's exposure is to, uh, commercial real estate, especially commercial mortgage-backed securities. There's a big problem in the commercial world. Uh, and it doesn't seem to be getting any attention in the world whatsoever, but there's some big problems with some big buildings over the course of the. You know, throughout the country that is owned by BlackRock and other large hedge funds. And they haven't really valued those assets down yet. So where, what is our exposure at that point? Because when that valuation and revaluation happens, it's going to echo.
Uh, it, 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 it has us concerned as it has you concerned. So we're certainly mindful of it. I'd say a couple of things. One is. There's been a measure of reduction in valuation. You're right, it's not done yet, but there's been some recognition and a lot of the big property managers, for example, have started to mark their portfolios down. When they do their appraisals. Um, the direct exposure in the plans is relatively small. Uh, I can get you a basis point estimate. There might be a little real estate exposure under the hood and principal diversified real asset. I think they typically run about twenty, twenty-five percent real estate. A lot of what they do, though, is not the stuff you're reading about, right, which is the office properties. Vacancies, indebtedness that needs to be refinanced. It tends to be things like, um. Uh, a multi-property condominium, um, uh, industrial, like specialty medical facilities. Uh, cell towers is a lot of what principle does. So the direct exposure that you've got to the problem real estate, which is entirely fair question and accurate observation. Uh, is really pretty small, uh, if at all, quite honestly. Um. Well, well, less than one percent of the assets. I don't even think honestly it's that. I could get you a precise number if you need it. Um, and then across the fixed income, uh, segment of the portfolio. Uh, some of your active managers, Met West and now Dodge and Cox, if you accept the proposal. Um, the BlackRock strategy, uh, they'll have small measures of mortgage-backed securities when they think that there's relative value there. I don't think either of them right now have any exposure to the commercial space. If they have some exposure, it would be to the residential space where the dynamics are a little different, but not to some of the problem areas that you accurately point to. So, long-winded, but I think the short answer is there's very little direct exposure to real estate in your portfolios. And certainly not the stuff that you're seeing make the papers.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. If there are no other questions, uh, I'm looking at two, I'm looking for two motions. One is to accept the recommendation on reallocation of the, um, targeted funds. Uh, and the second would be a recommendation, uh, to replace. The Met Metropolitan West Total Return Bond Fund with the Dodge and Cock, Cox Income Fund. So, um, I'll take this in two separate motions. Uh, and this is for everybody in the boards. Um, I will entertain a motion to, to accept the recommendation of Fiducient Advisors to shift the asset allocation. Targets of both funds. From the existing seventy percent equity in real estate and thirty percent fixed income mix. To a sixty-five percent equity and real estate and thirty-five percent fixed income mix. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Uh, are there questions? Anybody need further explanation? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I, motion two that I'm looking for, um, based on the, uh, presentation. Uh, I will entertain the recommendation of Fiducient Advisors. To replace in both funds, that's both the city and the police and fire funds. Uh, replacing Metropolitan West Total Return Bond Fund with the Dodge and Cox Income Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Was on the call voting also, right? Dan Farley is on the call voting also? Okay, good.
Yes, I did vote, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh. If, I guess there's nothing further on the presentation, so thank you very much for your.
I don't think we wanted to do OPEB tonight, right? Um, did folks want a quick update or not? I'll defer to the group. I don't want to get you off agenda.
Uh. I don't know that we have any other documentation in front of us with that.
Remember, we're all indexed, we're aligned with our allocation, performance has been good. We don't have any recommendations. It would be a quick update, but we're in good shape, I think.
Okay.
That okay?
All right.
All right, thanks for your time, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move into, um. Item five. Uh, this is for the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund. This is ASME Council four, local twenty-two twelve. City Hall employees. Am I missing anybody that's representing the City Hall employees on the call? Cheryl is on? Okay, all right. So, um, I, item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation. Effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-three. For Mary Pirati, Administrative Assistant for the Water Pollution Control Department after twenty-five years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
One seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Uh, questions or comments on the computation? Hearing none. All in favor? Again, this is the city halls. Thank you. Um, item six, uh, I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January sixth, twenty twenty-four for John Palladino. Uh, Building Inspector for the City of Torington after eighteen years of service.
Well, I'll move it.
Second.
I heard a lot of motions and seconds. I heard Councilwoman Ruette, uh, and Councilwoman Spino. Um, questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension. Computation effective just, excuse me, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three for Ruth Fabriello, Senior Secretary for the City of Torington. Uh, this was, she retired from the Recreation Department. Um, but actually worked in a number of departments in the City of Torington after twenty-eight years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, for the Board of Trustees. Um, again, of the City Employees Retirement Fund, under management resolution. Uh, this would be the city council members only. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept. The pension computation effective January third, twenty twenty-four for Deborah Gath Welch. Under, uh, Animal Control Officer for the City of Torington after ten point four-three years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Uh, questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January eighth. Twenty twenty-four for Nan Galicio, Registrar Clerk for the City of Torington after twenty-seven point zero-two years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Uh, questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective May eighteenth. Twenty twenty-three for Deborah Ramillard, Supervisor of the Elderly Nutrition. For the City of Torington after nine years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Uh, questions or comments on the? Calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, still with the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund, this is ASME Council four, local twenty-two twelve, Public Works Employees. Uh, item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March eighteenth. Twenty twenty-three for Jody Jenko, Public Works Foreman. Uh, for the City of Torington Street Department after twenty-nine years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January 1, 2024, for Roxanne Foster, Secretary for the City of Torrington Street Department after 18 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And, any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January 1, 2024, for Dale Carter, out of our, and he was, excuse me, Engineering Technician One for the City of Torrington Engineering Department after 15 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivan. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective August 1, 2023, for Daniel Vayou, Trail Driver for the City of Torrington Public Works Department after 17 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivan. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective August 10th, 2023, for Troy LaMaire, Caretaker Two for the City of Torrington Parks Department after 11 years of service.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivan. Questions on this calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving into the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund, ASME Council four, Local 1579. This is a Board of Education. I will entertain a vote to accept the pension computation effective October 2nd, 2023, for Christopher Cashman, Custodian for the City of Torrington, Board of Education, after 21.57 years of service.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivan. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January 6th, 2024, for John Aganini, Custodian for the City of Torrington Board of Education after 25.44 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivan. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective April 13th, 2022, for Craig Audia, Custodian for the City of Torrington Board of Education after 22.12 years of service.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Councilwoman Spino and Councilwoman Rowett mix it up a bit. Questions on the computation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so moving into the Board of Trustees for the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund, this is for the ASME Council 15, Local 442. So this is the Board of Safety and our police, the members of our police department that are members of the Board of Trustees. I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective May 1, 2023, for David Cooper, Patrolman A for the City of Torrington Police Department after 15.08 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'm sorry, to the Board of Safety, Commissioner Battle, do I have a second from the Board of Safety?
Second.
Seconded from Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on this computation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, I think we have James Foley on also, representing the Police Department. Thank you. Item 20, I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective August 10th, 2023, for Richard Dowd, Sergeant for the City of Torrington Police Department after 21.04 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Young. Questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, sticking with the Board of Trustees for the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund for the IAFF Council 15, Local 1567, this will be the Board of Safety members and the two members from the Fire Department. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recalculated pension computation effective May 14th, 2023, for Mark Garrison, Lieutenant for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 25.52 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Battle.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 22, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recalculated pension computation effective August 1, 2021, for Andrew Cordulo, Firefighter for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 27.68 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so item number 23, I did consult with firefighter Sterling and Delisle, and I think there's a question on the calculation of this. So, did you want to make a motion to table this?
Yes, if we could make a motion to table Lieutenant Zavikai's calculation.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion made and seconded, and this again is to the firefighters and the Board of Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then, final vote is to accept the recalculated pension computation effective April 15, 2023, for James W. Cosgrove Jr., Lieutenant for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 25.15 years of service.
Second.
Commissioner Battle, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on this calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There being no further business before this board, item number 25, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy and Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. We'll follow up with you on that correction. Thank you. Let's move right into our next meeting. Whoops. So, moving right into the final meeting of the evening, I will call to order this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. For the record, it is still Monday, February 5th, 2024. We have council members participating in person this evening, and present are Councilman Ivan, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rowett, Councilman Cavanero, and Councilman Oliver. That does constitute our quorum, and for the record, it is 7:14 PM. We'll move right into item number one. I will open the meeting to the public, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public, in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council and WPCA meeting rules of procedure. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, and seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I see we have our Boy Scouts from Troop Three present, working on your civics, is it your civics badge? Citizenship in the community. So, I know, I always feel bad when you come to the driest meetings. But as you can see, we're retiring a lot of people after a lot of years of service in the city. Many of them, you heard, worked for us for over 22, 23, 27 years. So we're excited to see you here, and maybe we'll give you a little more excitement in the next half of the meeting. Are there other members of the public that wish to address the council at this time? If you could come to the microphone and state your name?
Hello, members of the council and Mayor Carboni. My name is Colin Elkin. I live on Grove Street here in Torrington, and I'd like to discuss Sydney Ordinance 194-4, the winter parking ban. I believe the ordinance causes more frustration and hindrance on a regular basis than it prevents, and should be repealed or amended. First, a brief history of the ordinance for those unaware of its inception. According to the City Clerk's Office here in Torrington, the ordinance was enacted on October 17th, 1996. It originally prevented overnight parking from November 1st through April 1st of the following year, but was changed on November 6th, 2021, to span from December 1st to April 1st. I have done a visual survey in a 15-minute radius from my house, and of the first 100 residential driveways I came across, there were 62 that were linear in shape, meaning over 60% of these driveways would require cars to be parked in a line and therefore be stuck behind the cars closest in front of the driveway, unable to get onto the road. I live in a house with one such driveway. My housemates and I have a cordial relationship and communicate with each other regularly to try and get through this driveway dance that we have to perform. Most of the time, we are able to make it work, and however, we all know life is not so kind as to keep to an orderly schedule 100% of the time. This sort of traffic jam is happening all over Torrington at times during the day because of Ordinance 194-4, causing families with children to be delayed in an already time-starts lifestyle, causing elderly people trouble in getting to medical appointments on time, and working folks to be barred from their vehicles in times of urgent and unexpected appointments. The loss of time and accumulation of frustration is palpable, and all of this despite working together with our housemates in order and our neighbors to manage the burden that this ordinance creates. The intention of the ordinance were no doubt well-meaning, and in the 90s and early 2000s may have saved time and complications arising from having snowplows unable to do their jobs properly due to vehicles parked on the road overnight during a storm. However, according to data sourced from the Northeast Regional Climate Center, since the time of the ordinance enactment, annual levels of snowfall sums have been falling significantly. I believe we are all well aware of the milder winters compared with our use in recent years, anecdotally, I certainly am. And yet, on most nights without a drop of rain or a flake of snow within a 50-mile radius or an atmospheric temperature too high to produce snowfall, we are still forced to keep our vehicles off the streets. This presents a problem to people like myself, who live in residences with the limited space in our driveways, or houses that do have a linear driveway instead of an open one. I recognize that this is not the fault of the city itself, however, it is a reality that the citizens of Torrington live in regardless. Additionally, in the 90s and even into the early 2010s, we were all limited to meteorological data which was gathered by the use of Doppler radar. But in the early, in early 2012, the National Weather Service began to upgrade all of its radars with dual polarization capability, which is still used today. A dual-polarized radar transmits and detects microwave energy in both a horizontal and a vertical dimension, which gives meteorologists and in turn the public, which sees the data which is presented on local news stations, Google searches, and weather apps, a dramatically increased sense for the size, location, and precipitation type that a weather event might present. It is almost certain that someone today who has a car has reliable access to the internet, most likely from the phone they keep in their pocket or a computer at their office and home, much more likely than when the ordinance was first enacted. As mentioned earlier, local news sources also get their weather data from dual-polarized radar reports. Personally, I trust the people of Torrington to be able to plan ahead if there is a potential weather event overnight with this abundance of easy-to-access and accurate data. Nearly every working adult with a car regularly checks the weather regardless of the time of year. I understand that the ability to clear the roads in the event of a snowstorm is imperative for emergency vehicles to be able to operate effectively. That fact is not lost on me, nor would it be lost on the people of Torrington if this ordinance were repealed or amended. The fines associated with the breach of this ordinance for a normal vehicle at this time is just under $30 for a first offense, and to offer some possible solutions as a deterrent for people parking in the street overnight during a storm with heavy accumulation, I propose that a fine should be kept in place, if not doubled, via a new or amended ordinance to ensure that the streets could be kept clear for such an event. There are also cities such as New York, which is much more populated than Torrington, that enact a same-side-of-the-street parking rule over the winter, where cars are allowed to park on the street on the same side overnight, so that in the event of plowing emergency, the majority of the street is able to be cleared. I also received texts from Eversource occasionally regarding potential power outages due to the effect of a coming storm. I believe it is possible and easier than one would imagine to work out a system where a mass text is sent to the people of Torrington should there be a potential need for plowing. Regardless of the method, I believe that there is a way that we can accomplish the intended goal of 194-4 without impeding the general public in the way that it does today. In conclusion, for the sake of the general peace of mind and freedom for the people of the city, there should be no ordinance at all preventing us from parking our vehicles on the street overnight when there is no apparent need for plowing. And please consider amending or repealing Ordinance 194-4. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, we appreciate your coming out.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the ordinance committee that met earlier today will take your request into consideration.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Other members from the public wishing to address the council at this time? All right, so I'm just going to take a moment, I do have, I'm sure the council would agree with me, some certificates that we should be presenting to some of our retirees, particularly those that have served our community for such a long period of time. So I'm going to go to the podium so that I can call them up and present them. So, you'll forgive my back. I know we read off quite a few, and as you heard, some of those retirements happened over the last several months, 12 months, many of them. But we did want to invite all of them to the council meeting, to, for the council members, an opportunity to express their gratitude. So if I can call John Palladino up, he is one of our most recent retirees, retiring on January 5th, and we wanted to present you with this citation in recognition, in recognition of your many years of devoted service for the City of Torrington. Through your hard work and dedication and commitment, you have served the City of Torrington well with pride and honor. Thank you for your contribution to our community and your excellent service to its many citizens. Please accept our sincerest congratulations and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement as you enter this new chapter of your life, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Torrington on the 5th day of February in the year 2024.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you. So, and just as a quick reminder, John served in our building department, and I don't think that I'm speaking out of turn when I say that is such a difficult job, when you are actually out there and dealing with the public in sometimes the most stressful situations when they're trying to move their home renovations or building projects forward. So I don't know if you just want, if you did, if you wanted to say a few words, or...
Thank you, everyone. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve Torrington and represent public safety in a way of keeping us safe in our homes. It's part of make it better than how you found it. It's not easy. You're in there dwelling. Sometimes it's good news and sometimes it's not so good news, but you always try to compliment the effort and the funding and all the sweat equity that goes into it. And we thank them for investing in our town because sometimes we are the face of the frontline. So we want to encourage them to come back and reinvest, and it's, it's been a great process, and thanks, everyone, for making my job a lot easier, because we all work together in all departments, and we work as a family. And, um, we work as a family. So, thank you very much.
So, uh, I think Dale is here, if? So, um, Dale Carter, uh, worked in our engineering department from August 11, 2008 through December 31, 2023. Um, you know, was one of those positions where you didn't necessarily see him out in the field all the time. Um, and even in City Hall, I don't think I saw him a lot in the hallways. Um, but he always was, um, you know, working very hard um, to, uh, protect the infrastructure in the city of Torrington. So uh, with that said, I wanna present you with this citation in recognition of your years of devoted service. Um, and thank you for your contribution to our community and your excellent service to its many citizens. Uh, we wish you the sincerest best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement as you enter this new chapter of your life. So that is for you.
Thank you very much.
Really, really appreciate this. This is, uh, something I didn't expect. It was a job that I actually enjoyed. It was something that, uh, I loved dealing with the public and I love dealing with the contractors. Uh, thank you very much.
Who else? Do we have anyone else? All right, so I have certificates for, um, those city employees that we all, um, uh, approved pension calculations, and I'll make sure that they all get them. So, thank you. All right. I think those are the first 14 steps I took all day. Um, it's still open to the public. So is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna move right on to item two on our agenda. Uh, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from January 16, 2024.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rewett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, item three. I will entertain a motion to appoint George Craig as a regular member of the Conservation Commission to fill the remainder of a term set to expire on September 4, 2024.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, questions on this appointment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four. I'll take this in three parts. For A, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Pasquale Nijame as a regular member of the Board of Assessment Appeals to fill the remainder of a term set to expire on December 5, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Spino. Um, questions or comments on this appointment? And I see Pasquale is here. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, item 4B, I will entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Catherine Ruth Haas to the Board of Assessment Appeals to, um, fill the alternate vacancy for a term to expire on December 5, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. And, uh, questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of George Nujame to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a three-year term to expire December 5, 2026.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Um, and before I, um, call the motion, I just wanna, um, acknowledge all of the work that George puts into this, um, commit commission and the commitment. Um, this is, uh, again, not an easy job. Um, and it's time-intensive with a very short time period with which to do the work um, and working very closely with our assessor's office, and he's done such a great job for the city of Torrington. So we greatly appreciate your entertaining the motion. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item five. Uh, I will entertain a motion uh, to authorize the mayor to execute and amend the police union contract. Uh, this is the agreement between the city of Torrington, Connecticut, and Torrington Police Union, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 52, dated July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, as further explained in the Director of Human Resources memo dated February 2, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino, and seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All right, and the floor is open for questions. And I don't know. Yeah?
Just, you know, um, I saw the memo from Denise. Um, I, I just was a little confused with the background. I'm certainly in support of the wages, um, wage increases, and but there was nothing done with deferred compensation, right? Plan.
The drop. Is that, oh, the deferred. Oh, you mean the pension. Uh, defined benefits, um, plan.
Yes.
That is correct. No changes. Uh, the defined benefit plan or pension is um, a part of this contract, but that is always negotiated separately.
Separately.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Which is separately, next year it's due, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have a few questions on this front. I, I liked the summary you had over the contract. Um, but i- is there a total cost that we could quantify? That the changes in this, uh, proposed contract? And how have we allocated that for our budget?
So I don't have the total cost. Um, we could certainly get that number for you. Uh, because there are vacancies, we did calculate the total impact on all of the positions that have been budgeted. Um, we have budgeted sufficient funds to cover these negotiations uh, in the current budget year. Uh, they were, um, itemized and, uh, as a lump sum in Department 44 of our budget.
Okay. I, if I recall the budgeting time period, you had allocated some assets in some line items to guesstimate where that was coming in, and so I assume that it's kinda coming in on your whereabouts targets.
Yes. Between the, um, vacancy savings, um, I think, um, chief, is it, um, 12 positions that were down? Between the vacancy savings and the, um, salaries, the current salaries line item and the funds that were approved to be set aside for negotiations, uh, we do have sufficient funds to cover the lump sum.
Okay. Now, as, uh, it appears that it's a very generous, um, contract uh, for this department and in hopes to closing our competitive gap with regional police forces uh, that kind of scoop our officers early on after they've been training on force, up to speed, and they drive down Route 8 and, uh, yeah, get us, and we, it's a do-over moment, and we're, we're falling short on allocating new personnel for all different reasons. Have we done a competitive analysis where this contract puts us in relation to uh, other departments, whether it's Watertown, Waterbury, uh, you know, all the towns down Route 8 or, you know, down to New Haven or out to Hartford? Have we looked at the competitive packages between?
We did. Yes. Uh, there was a comprehensive analysis of, I wanna say 30 different departments. Um, Deputy Chief Barone was instrumental in um, assembling all of those various contracts um, as a result of these negotiations. Uh, instead of being in the bottom two or three on the pay scale of competitiveness, this puts us more in line with the middle. Um, so uh, certainly makes us uh, more competitive, um, but um, certainly not the top paid
Mm-hmm.
as a distressed municipality. I can say I greatly appreciate that um, our men and women that serve, um, in our public safety sectors uh, recognize, uh, the challenges that we face as a distressed municipality. But what we also recognize, um, is this is a time where perhaps we have to go a little deeper into the taxpayers' pocket to, uh, make ourselves a little more attractive to recruiting and retaining and rewarding those, um, men and women that have stayed committed to the city of Torrington.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and thank actually those who participated in the negotiations and, um, I would like to see us even above the middle in terms of our salaries, um, and be competitive with those municipalities that are similar in size um, to Torrington. But um, I wouldn't use the word generous. I think it's a well uh, well-funded, you know. It's, and with the vacancies that have been, the 12 vacancies plus, I'm sure there's money that is set aside for, for these kinds of increases and should be budgeted for our next budget year as well. Um, so thank you for, you know, being a part of the negotiations and coming up with this recommendation. Well-deserved, and hopefully it'll help in your recruitment and retention.
Yeah, I have one more question. Hands down.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the mayor, Waterbury, was on the news yesterday, and he was saying that uh, they were looking at some of their competitive advantages, how they transition officers from other departments uh, into their police department and to lateral transfer. Instead of starting off as a patrol officer, a lot of departments require they could, uh, basically take, uh, transfers from other departments into the department and not have to make a do-over moment. Is that something that was considered here, or what, what is our standard in terms of, uh, taking transfer officers from other departments?
I'm gonna let, uh, Deputy Chief answer that, please.
So, as part of our application process, we do also advertise for lateral transfers. So we do accept that, and we're hoping that this contract will also draw in some officers from other departments as a lateral transfer. So we are, we are already accepting those, and it's part of the application process.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Other, yes, please, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I support the, the, the terms of the contract, you know, uh, and for all the arguments that have been made and the reasons, um, and, and the reasons, uh, forwarded by other people. My question is about the base equity adjustment number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've been doing this a long time, and usually in contract negotiations, when one department gets, um, gets a benefit, it becomes a precedent for others. Will this impact, uh, for the negotiations with other bargaining units in Torrington? And how do you plan on dealing with that?
I suspect that, um, what this board and the Board of Finance will see, um, in fact, even uh, a little bit further in the agenda, um, is that there are going to be adjustments across the board. Um, I know the Board of Education has their budget before, um, excuse me, their contract before this board for approval. Um, for many, many years, um, our teachers, our firefighters, and our police officers, um, have worked uh, with us to hold the line um, on the impact that their wages or salaries have on the taxpayers. Um, in some years, uh, prior to my administration, um, there were years that they even came back to the table and offered no increase. They took a zero on some of those years. Um, and what we're finding now, 10 years later, is that the negative impact of doing that makes us extremely uncompetitive in the recruitment and the retention of these um, critical positions in the city of Torrington. Um, so I fully expect that this will have an impact. Um, we continue to work um, diligently with the departments, finding other ways to enhance um, uh, whether it's, uh, wages or, um, holding the line on, uh, premium cost share. We will continue to always keep first in mind um, the impact that this will have on the taxpayers. Um, but just as important is the impact that this has on the people that work for the city of Torrington and work for the residents of the city of Torrington.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I know in years past, just for the record, I'm not sure exactly when this happened, but there was a major base equity adjustment in teachers' contracts, going back about 25 years ago, I believe, but I think that was a huge bump, much more than the $5,000 as a percentage at the time. And it was for much the same reason to make our teaching, our teaching, our teachers much more competitive. And it did have that, um, um, positive salutary effect on, on the department. So uh, when this gets reported in the paper, I hope they, they that they make the public aware of why this is necessary to do this.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, I, we have our union uh, members in the back row there. Thank you again for um, your great opportunity to work with you on these contract negotiations. All right, I'm gonna move into item number six. Uh, this is on management resolution. I will, um, I have to take this one in two um, parts. So 6A, I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions of the management resolution document uh, dated February 5, 2024. Excuse me, the version dated February 5, 2024. Do I have a motion?
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rewett.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Um, and so I'm just going to um, touch lightly on some of the drivers um, on the changes that we made in this. As um, you saw in the memo, uh, that was presented to you for consideration before the meeting. Uh, uh, this is another, um, group that um, for decades, the wage increases for this, um, group of, um, uh, elected and other city officials, they are non-union and confidential employees. Um, their wages under management resolution, um, in past years was always tied to what was awarded to the supervisors' unions. This is not a contract. This is not a, a, a union, um, uh, class of employees. Uh, and what we found, particularly in the last two years, is that 11 of the 18 exempt positions, those are, these are your executive positions, 11 of the 18 positions were new hires. New hires resulting from retirements, resignations, um, or the creation of a new position. So out of this, um, this turnover, we found once again the wages were not competitive with the market demands for a comptroller or an HR director um, or anybody in our finance department. So, um, what we were looking to accomplish is, um, uh, we also found there of the, um, seven positions that remained employed under this agreement or this resolution, um, some of them have been with the city for over 25 years, and some of them have been with the city for seven weeks. So, um, it was an opportunity for us to look at this uh, agreement or this, I've gotta stop calling it an agreement, with this resolution, and move it to, um, codify those global issues such as uh, insurance contributions, days off, um, you know, all of those global issues. But then allow us to move into a more uh, performance-based pay scale. Um, so what I was looking to accomplish is, um, a little um, change in our approach to offering these wage adjustments based on performance, based on the qualifications of the job. Uh, when you have your chief and your deputy chief of either the police department or the fire department, um, tied to another union, um, that might be getting a 3% raise department tied to another union, that might be getting a 3% raise, and their rank and file are receiving equity adjustments and other wage increases, it closes that gap. And it makes it very difficult to separate your chiefs and your deputy chief from the, you know, rank and file or even the command staff. So, a slight change in this approach under management resolution. And I'm looking for the council to approve this approach. And then we can talk about what those wages would look like. So, I have a motion made by Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, and the floor is open to questions.
I was looking at the vacation time allotted in this contract. And for someone with, I would expect years of service to be coming on board, to offer only two weeks of vacation seemed short on someone that would be, I would think, senior in their position at this level. And is two weeks kind of a difficult start-over moment for someone making a job change? Would that be a deterrent?
So, it's two weeks, plus there are days that get added for the number of years of service. And I think they max out at 25 days for vacation.
Okay, so they are getting allocated.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, for their years of experience.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Other questions or comments on this? All right, if there are no questions, I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so item 6B, this is where the budgetary impact would be taken into consideration. So, what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the $77,942.56. As a funding pool related to the management resolution, these are the non-elected official wage and salary changes for the fiscal year 2324. Keep in mind, that is the current year that we are in. This is an agreement that would be retroactive to July 1. So, that 77.9 number reflects the full year's salary adjustments for all of the employees for this resolution. Do I have a motion to approve that some? Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
I'm not sure why you didn't just do 78,000.
I know. I don't, I'm sorry. It is very specific, I know. And it may well be tied to, again, this is, I don't have a second. Let me, let me call the second first.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. So, this again is tied to, one, we were doing budget adoption for fiscal year 2324. Again, funds being set aside in anticipation of a guesstimate, and I do appreciate that term, as to where we thought we would land with a management resolution. So, it probably ties out to what we actually had set aside for this. Questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, item seven, I will entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for fireworks display for fiscal 2425 at the same price and terms as the current contract in the amount of $24,000 to Zambelli Fireworks Manufacturing Company of Warren Dale, Pennsylvania, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated February 1, 2024. Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the motion? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, and I apologize to the Board of Ed members that have been sitting here through all of this. I wish we'd put this up a little bit earlier. But I am looking for a motion to ratify, and I'm going to put this, I'm going to leave the options up to you. And I'll explain, let me explain it first. Teachers' contract negotiations are their obligation and responsibility of the Board of Education. However, by statute, they are required to bring the negotiated document, which has been ratified by both the union and the Board of Education, to the council, the legislative body of the municipality, for ratification. The council can deal with this one of three ways. Approve it, ratify it, and it will move forward. Take no action, which is a silent approval. So, by taking no action, it doesn't say that you agree with it, but it certainly says you do not deny it. And by virtue of no action within 30 days, it would be ratified and go into effect, or it can be denied. So, I would be looking for a motion to do one of those three. And this is on the agreement between the Torrington Board of Education and the Torrington Education Association for July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2027. And whomever makes the motion, I would ask that you insert the action you wish to take. Sorry. That's the way it goes.
So, it's ratify?
Ratify.
Ratify?
Or make no comment. Ratifying.
I'll make a motion to ratify.
Thank you. I have a, thank you. I have a motion to ratify.
I will second.
And I have a second to ratify. Okay, the floor is open for discussion. And we do have Board of Ed Superintendent Wilson is here and the HR director is here. Questions? Comments?
Great. Could we have a summary analysis by the Board of Ed? And I just want to know how to get to step 14 on their tier system.
So, the document was provided as part of the board package?
Yeah.
With the summary, which was, I think, pretty well laid out. Were the questions specific to the summary that you wanted to ask? And I don't know, Ms. Schulte, if.
Maybe just the highlights of what this contract does in terms of changes compared to the previous contract.
All right, who gets the short straw?
So, the language changes were summarized in the document. And really, it was just cleaning up a lot of language that helps us more effectively run our schools, but gives the teachers the needed time that they need as well. So, I think that's kind of a summarize. But if you have specific questions about any of the things that were in the two-page summary, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, well, as for instance, teacher prep hours went from 200, 260. Where do those 60 hours come from?
Yeah, so, they're getting a lot of those minutes now because of our scheduling that we have. So, it really actually is just codifying what they're actually getting in many cases. And in addition, you'll see that we did change some of the language around their start time and their end time, as far as how much time before and after the student day. So, giving them that time for those additional minutes kind of makes up for the fact that we took those, some of those minutes at the beginning and the end of the day as well.
Okay, great.
So.
And could you kind of point us to, what issues were you addressing with some of the language changes?
A lot of it was about that start and end time. So, that was really, you know, wonderful collaboration and mutual agreement on how we were able to do what was best for students, but give the teachers the time they needed. So, really, it was making sure that we had the right coverage for student safety.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there other questions while we have Ms. Schulte at the podium? Mr. Kevin Arrow?
Is there a change in Article 26, Page 22, teachers required to be present 10 minutes before the student school day?
Yeah, that's the language I was just referring to. So.
What was that originally?
There used to be, it used to just be five minutes before and five minutes after the student school day. Now, we're requiring them to be.
10 and 10.
10 minutes before, 10 minutes after, so that we can make sure that we have the right coverage for student safety for the bus arrival and the bus departure.
When did it move to?
When, when did it change? Having negotiated this contract twice myself, when did it change from two, five minutes? Because I believe it used to be 15 to 20 before that, when I was negotiating the contract.
I can't speak to that. That was before my time.
I'm concerned about how much time the teachers are actually there in the building before and after. And that was a concern of ours, too, when we were on most of them. A number of us were on the Board of Ed before this. So, now I'm just curious. I think five minutes before and five minutes after is way too little. So, how did you arrive at that time?
The five minutes before and the five minutes after has been in the contract for quite a while.
Wow.
So, since before I arrived here.
I'm just shocked to hear that it changed because I negotiated that to make sure it was 20, so that it was adequate time to get to from the parking lot to the car.
I could certainly, I could research that certainly and find out. But it was, it's definitely been at least three contracts.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Schulte?
The only pay raise I saw was in the final tier level 14. Is there a reason why only that tier level changed?
So, I think they get a step movement every single year.
Yes.
And then we added that additional step to be able to kind of smooth out those steps at the end of the scale. So, everybody will get a step movement every year of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Question over here.
I'm sorry, Councilman Oliver.
I'm just now recalling, is it, they get step or step plus?
In this contract, it's just step every year. There's no GWI. It's just step movement every year.
Thank you. Okay. So, it's only the top step that gets the percentage increase, right?
Yes, yes. Top step will get 3%. Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions?
You know, I think about these steps that we don't necessarily have with our own municipal employees. We just looked at the increases for our police, and they seem to be higher on this. Am I reading that right? For the 3.9%? 3.97% in?
Where are you at? What page?
Where the salary schedule?
Which page, please?
It's the second page.
Of, is that 3%? What does GWI stand for?
General wage increase.
General wage. So, it could be up to what for the annual increase for teachers? What's the maximum?
So, the 3.97 is the average?
Oh, it is.
And that's, that's looking at the snapshot of our staff and what that step increase would look like for our group of people for the snapshot in time.
I'm just making a note just for.
Yeah.
A comparison for what we do for our municipal employees and our public safety. So, just, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to call this motion. And again, the motion was to ratify. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, moving into item number nine, building permit refunds. On the recommendation of Corporation Counsel, who's putting in the long day today, I will entertain a motion to authorize the building department to refund the permit fee of $1,003 to Corca Enterprises LLC, owner of record of 1347 East Main Street, as further explained in Attorney Magistrally's memo dated February 1, 2024.
So much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments?
Have we done this before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's infrequent, but it does happen.
Yeah. But it's no loss because if the work didn't happen and they're just pushing it forward a little bit, and.
If I might, and in this particular case, this owner has already applied for a permit, again, to do the same work.
Okay.
And the only thing you'll notice, too, is what happens is the total building permit fee that he paid originally is, is more than the refund he's getting because there are some state fees that they don't get the refund for.
Oh.
That are just passed through anyone, so.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Counsel's memo of February 5, 2024.
So much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
A second.
And second by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list, dated February 5, 2024.
So much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments on the memo or the list? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorizes sewer use refunds indicated in the list, dated February 5, 2024. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Okay.
And second by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving into item 13, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And anything to add this evening, Chief?
I just want to thank the council for passing the resolution for the union contract. It's very, very important. While this is not a magic wand that's going to solve our vacancy problem, we're still going to have officers that are going to leave. We are still going to have officers that are going to get out of law enforcement altogether because of the times that we're in right now. It is going to go a long way to help with retention and recruitment. And I appreciate Councilman Ruette's comments that we need to get above the middle, middle hire. Torrington is a unique area where it's, the geographics makes it difficult to recruit and to retain people in our area. They're coming from abroad. They're coming from various parts of the state. They come here to be trained, and then they leave to go closer to home. There's a lot of fierce competition amongst departments right now for recruitment. As you mentioned, Councilman, the lateral transfers, we are, we aggressively advertise lateral transfers. And unfortunately, those officers that are laterally transferring are from the center, southern part of the state, and not too many coming up this neck of the woods. We did have one lateral transfer. The officer's doing extremely well. We're very pleased to have him on board. He came from the New Haven Police Department a couple of years ago. So, we're very, we're very happy about that. But again, there's a lot of work to be done. The mayor recognizes it. The council recognizes it. I want to thank the Board of Public Safety for their continued support of our department, as well as the fire department and all public safety entities in our city here. I also want to thank Denise. She worked so hard in getting this contract prepared for tonight. She did yeoman's work here. And, you know, for a new personnel director to step in both with both feet, she did an excellent job. So, we're very fortunate to have Denise on board. But I want to thank again the council for their continued support of our department. And I really appreciate it all. And also, my deputy here, he's my, my right and my left-hand man. I am so pleased with his, his work and what he does for, for me and for the city. So, again, thank you. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anything you want to add, Deputy Chief? I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw a little light. Any Excel spreadsheet that we needed during our negotiations, Deputy Chief Barone was ace's at it. So, thank you. So, Denise, anything from HR this evening? Thank you. And I know she's not a department head, but for anyone who doesn't recognize Mauret Wall from my office, I know, thank you. She does deserve a round of applause. Anything from the city clerk's office? I just realized, so on the screen, I don't know, Chief Borden, was there anything that you wanted to add this evening?
Nothing for the council, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Farley, anything from the treasurer's office?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And I know Ray Drew was on the call. Did we lose him? Okay, all right. And Corporation Counsel? And Corporation Counsel?
Just I'm excited to be here at my first council meeting. It's great to be here and I look forward to working with all of you. I've been having a lot of fun upstairs since I started and I think it's for me a good fit and I hope for the city it is as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'll reserve my comments for the next agenda items. So I'm moving into item 14, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start on my left. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
No, thank you, Mayor. That's nice.
Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Just a question, Mayor. I'd like to know what horrible, horrible thing this Boy Scout troop did to.
That's what happens when you don't think your fundraiser balls.
What did they do? Is there an answer to that?
I know, I, you know, when.
We investigated. Can we give that to our new city council, our new attorney?
So when Jeff Seizer emailed me and said, our, our boys will be here, our, our boys and girls. And I wasn't sure if there were any girls. And he was like, oh my gosh, this meeting of all meetings. But I mean, obviously citizenship, you know, it is, it is what we do.
They get by the hour.
I know. Yeah, I'm sure. They'll have much to talk about when they get home. Anything else?
No, that'll do it.
Councilwoman Ruette?
I wanted to thank our Corporation Counsel for coming to our first ordinance meeting of the year. We are going to be a busy committee because we're looking at ordinances that we can either take off the books or revise, but mostly trying cleaning up our, our ordinances moving forward. I did have one complaint on, I hate to say it, the intersection of Prospect Street and Water Street. A lot of vagrancy around Trinity Church during the hours of, between the hours that they're not in the shelter. And you know, I don't, you know, I don't expect that there be, you know, any more police presence there, but some of the businesses are quite concerned. Don't know what we can do expressing a concern.
No, and I do appreciate hearing those concerns. I have received some emails from some businesses and other neighbors that have been impacted. I do think it's important and I know that the chief is and deputy chief are keeping track of calls for service. These are important things for us to weigh as we, you know, think about what does this look like going forward?
And where is it?
Well, yeah, a permanent location, you know, really, does it, does it just need to be the city of Torrington? I know there's a lot of conversation at the state level. But yeah, something for us to be talking about over the next couple of months, not next fall.
Location, location.
To that point, Mayor, you know, we've discussed this prior to this. And I also like to thank the chief for forwarding. I'm not sure how many people got it, but he did an analysis of what last year looked like in terms of police, what was required of police presence related to the homeless situation in Torrington. And to me, I mean, maybe I'm just a naive young pup, but
No.
It was astonishing how many different ways there are, there are, there are points of conflict and, and points of friction between a homeless community and the general population and how many different types of intervention are required by our, our police department. It was, it was really eye opening. It was a very, very thorough study. And I hope that does disseminate as we go forward. And I'd also like, I know this is a big ask. I realize that. But I would like to keep this on the table as part of the conversation is, you know, for those of us who've been involved in government for a long time in Torrington, we know that the state of Connecticut has, you know, in, in many, many, many ways, by funding and granting in many particular ways, services in Torrington. They have built these situations and they have come. Okay? So the state owns part of this, this development of, of people in need into Torrington that didn't exist before and numbers that didn't exist before. And I would like us to think if there are strategically, if there are ways that we could, you know, push back on the state to basically provide down the road somewhere, a real social service department within the city that they, you know, a, a robust and modern social service department that handles this so that we don't have all our various agencies touching what our social service problems, not specifically police, fire, this, that, religious communities, you know. We are there at this point, it seems to me, and, and we need the appropriate institution with professionally trained people to manage that. It shouldn't be the mayor's office to me personally. And if other people agree with me, I'd like to see how we put that on a, you know, on some sort of timeline for, for bringing it forward to the appropriate people at the state level. And if, if, if this is not possible, then let's have that conversation. But if it's something that, you know, is, is something that, that we can push toward utilizing the resources we have in Hartford, I would like to see us at least try that. It shouldn't be just this, you know, this, this ad hoc committee year in, year out. We're doing this for something that Torrington has to fund by itself because we did not, the people of Torrington have not created this problem by ourselves. And I'll get off my soapbox now. Thank you.
That's all right. No. Don't disagree with anything you've just said. So, yeah. Yeah, except that young.
And naive.
Naive too. Those three words are the only thing we disagree with.
That's what, that's what you see when you see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. So I'm sorry, was there anything else? I know that that was just.
Going. Lots to say about it. And certainly we are very embracing generous community when it comes to helping people. And there are so many resources within, and the collaboration of those resources is so integral to, to meeting the people's needs. It's just, I think the location, you know, and I know there are efforts, you know, to try and find another location that's not necessarily right in town.
Right, in your commercial district or residential neighborhood.
And I think transportation's an issue for outlaying communities to, but they need to be a part of the solution.
They certainly do.
Absolutely. It's just a very complicated issue.
You know.
I wanted to express the concern of the location at this point and its problem of people in that area during business hours.
Certainly. Yeah. You know, as I'm reflecting in what Councilman Kevin Arrow and Councilwoman Ruette are saying, I don't mind saying that I've brought this up and I have expressed that I do feel this is a regional problem. Yes, I agree with you that there are state. So I have been pressing and engaging the social worker that works for the cog. You know, that is our regional social worker. And he's one young man who does a great job, but it's a big job. And it isn't just the city of Torrington. We know our homeless come from all over the county. And when they say they're Torrington, they mean Torrington area. For anybody that was tuning into or participating in the public hearings, the vast majority of the people that testified to the Planning and Zoning Commission were not from Torrington. They were from Harwood and Litchfield and Goschen and Winchester, Winstead. So, you know, ergo, it is a regional problem. There is a, there's a lot of pressure on the city of Torrington to take care of this issue. But I would say that it is a regional problem. And if the state isn't going to step up and help us address this issue, at the very least, our cog towns have to. So, all right, I'll get off your soapbox. So I'm sorry, Councilwoman Spino, did you have anything to add this evening?
I was going to ask about the cog meeting this morning and if anything was brought up about that.
No. Yeah, actually Representative Case did bring up a little bit about it, you know, because obviously the funding is sunsetting. So last year it was half a million dollars that was funded to staff winter sheltering. This year I think it's $240,000 and then some other funds coming in and out from other, other agencies. But if it does sunset, then the bigger question is, then what? You know, without staff? Then what? You know, and these churches, I mean, they're, they're great and they're, you know, they step up and they do everything they can, but they are not equipped to deal with the mental health or the addiction component of what homelessness looks like now. So we have, I think, some big decisions to make and it shouldn't just be the burden of the city of Torrington.
Mayor, that report from, from the chief police, was that distributed to the whole?
It was, yes. The council, the Planning and Zoning Commission received it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, it did come up, but not a whole lot of love for it. So. Anything else? Councilman Iveyne?
Just to address Ann's concern, not all business hours, but later on in afternoon, you know, like we have a choir group that meets at Trinity Church. The aides at a homeless shelter are there ushering people around the corner to the soup kitchen area to get them in. So there's a little, you know, it is loud and disruptive at, at that time. But I think unfortunately they are congregating on Water Street somewhat nuisance throughout the day. So that, that is, you know, concerning to those businesses. But I, I am concerned that like every year could be like a different year. It's going to play out differently also. So where's the shelter? How are we going to manage it? Are there going to be funds? And no one's making promises to anything at this point. I'm also told attending some of the homeless shelter meetings that there's 100 people in the woods that don't come and use the shelter, even though we have, you know, 25, 30 people using the shelter. There's a lot more in the surrounding areas of Torrington that don't, are not coming out. Which is, you know, if we really have a weather event and super freezing cold, you know, it's going to be a, a critical moment if they all need to shelter at the same time.
Yeah, I would like to just, just note that last month around the holidays, I spent a month in California. Both Southern California where my daughter and husband live. And then up, up in the San Francisco where my brother and cousins live. And you talk about, I mean, the homeless, they're obviously much, much bigger cities, but the homelessness problem is so pervasive and, and it is so continuing. And when you talk to anybody who's involved in any way with the city in any capacity, those cities or, or any leadership capacity, they will tell you, you know, what they're, what they really say is that for many, many, many years, this didn't just spring up. The can has been kicked down the road and you hear it said in different ways, but it's always that. Nobody wanted to take the bull by the horns. Nobody wanted to take the problems head on because it was so complex and involve so many levels of decision-making. And, and then it just got overwhelming. Okay? It became overwhelming. And I, so again, the urgency of doing this, Mayor, and I know is that we need to get at front of this because we will shortly be behind it, even in a small town like us. But then, but again, the forces at play, when I hear people outside of Torrington who are constantly saying, well, that's Torrington's problem. I wish Torrington would get in front of that. They need to do something. They, it's always us. You know, and to your point, Mayor, so many of these, so many of this, so many of these people are not coming from Torrington. And yet we need to do so. We do need, through the council regularly, Mayor, and whatever help we as council men and women can do, we'll certainly support efforts to get ahead of this.
If I could also ask, just on the public's comments on the winter parking ban in terms of the, the street daddy mentioned and the parking situation, is there any way to accommodate more temporary parking bans around weather events versus just the whole time period during the wintertime?
That was a change in the ordinance as a recommendation really by Public Works and, you know, Public Safety. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how you do that, you know? I mean, I think he had some really good ideas, but we flushed them out during that ordinance meeting and public hearing. It's an issue. You want your streets plowed, but you don't want to, you know, who knows the weather. I know he had some ideas in terms of other, I don't know. I, I don't see us be honest with you. Since the, it was just revised, I'm not sure about bringing it back up for another revision.
If I could just add, so the challenge is the public's perception of, you know, what qualifies as, you know, an event that would precipitate a parking ban. They think of snow. But the fact of the matter is there are a lot of ice events. So today it was over 40 degrees. Tonight it drops to 20. There's snow melting. There's water in the road and it freezes and our Public Works crews must get out and they must sand. So if the cars are parked in, you know, in the locations where all that ice is accumulating, they can't get to the road treatment the way that they need to. So it isn't just, you know, the weatherman is predicting, you know, Doppler radar is calling for three inches of snow. Everybody, you know, get into the driveway. There are a lot of events in between snow or freezing rain that have to be taken into consideration. And we could certainly have our, our street department do another presentation. I know that there's a really great storm response document on the website. If you wanted to take a little time and access that, I think it'll give you a little perspective as to why it's difficult to do, you know, random bans. And there is no mass communication, I know. And I was just in Hartford earlier, late last week. You know, and they have those blue lights that start flashing that tell you there's a parking ban. We don't have that infrastructure. We don't have that technology. And our Torrington alerts just isn't getting the traction that we thought it would. So being able to communicate that out to the public in such a way that it would afford our Public Works crews the ability to manage conditions the way that they need to.
And we, we looked at other city ordinances. I know they're pretty similar. And, you know, we moved up the timeline a little bit just so that it wasn't November. It was December, right, December?
Yes, yeah, we shortened it.
So we shortened the plan, but I, I just can't for consistency basis staffing of city, you know, city departments to prepare. I don't know. This is New England. Who knows the weatherman, whether he's going to be right or wrong.
It's always inconvenient.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's it.
Thank you.
All right. So then I'm just going to try to wrap this up. Budget Subcommittee, I understand Mr. Iveyne and Councilwoman Spino will be the council representatives. From our Board of Finance, I have Ms. Pesky and Mrs. Trob. And on the Board of Safety, we have Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner Young. So we have a budget Subcommittee. We're working on a budget document. We have February 15th as the date that the budget is supposed to drop on the council's desk. We're doing everything we can to get us there, keeping in mind that when I talked earlier about 11 of 18 positions turning over. I can tell you in my finance department, four of them were in the finance department. So we're rebuilding. We're working as fast as we can and I'm going to do my best to keep us on the February 15th timeline. If that doesn't work, I certainly will reach out to the council to have some official action taken to allow us to extend that date if necessary. So tomorrow morning at 9:30, Corporation Counsel and I will be attending the court hearing on the Yankee Pedlar Inn with Attorney Nelligan, who's been representing the city for the past, I said, almost three years. We started this lawsuit in 2021. February 6th was the deadline for the defendants of the action, that's Jason Hospitality's, to present their unconditional commitment or funding. We've seen a copy of what has been presented and it certainly isn't unconditional and it certainly isn't a commitment. So we intend to attend that hearing and make the city's concerns known so the judge will take appropriate actions accordingly. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So that's, I mean, there's so much that goes on, but those are the big, the big ones that I think that the council needs to be aware of. the big ones that I think that the council needs to be aware of right now. With that said, I'm going to move into item fifteen, which is to reopen the meeting to the public. So I'll entertain a motion to do so.
So much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And second by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And nobody from the public unless Marret, did you want to say something? Thank you. All right, I'm going to move right into sixteen. There being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned at eight twenty six. Thank you all.